No, that was her.
Oh, no. I planned to make a stop and then I didn't have enough time to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What about the shooting? We live there.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think, because the fire station was right down the road from us. We get a couple times a day. Then around Newish, there were, I mean, there were three parts. It became clear to me, and I looked at the window, pretty much everything was off.
I just want to make sure.
I heard the one turning, I think, and it's a shooter.
Okay, maybe. No, we're going to put it, keep that in mind.
We made a meeting, sir, for you.
I told you sixteenth.
Can I come here, shoot, refer?
Okay, motion, my daddy, if I had it, all in favor. Okay, meeting, call meeting, I told you twenty fifth, because I have a ten.
My motion, we're free, yes.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and a motion, a second, all in favor. Okay, we're going to go into public hearing this time. You want to talk about?
We'll begin with the annexation resuming of Matt Parcel Number XX126050 from Act to R1. I do not believe Mr. Rice is here to speak on that tonight.
Okay, do we have any questions on that?
And we're going to go through all of these, and during all this next, you guys will be going on it, okay?
Okay.
Any questions? The second one is application for alcohol reference license distance waiver permit for restaurant Piquet MX.
Okay, I thank the judge for media work for doing that, and question.
If y'all recall, the parties involved in that, talking about it this summer, and there's a list of conditions. If you all choose to adopt that waiver, permit for waiver, distance waiver, our ordinance allows you to impose conditions. And if it's okay with Mayor Council, I'll read those conditions to say whether there was agreement there. No sales will be made on Sundays, except for evenings of Cinco de Mayo and Super Bowl Sunday. No sales will be made during church hours, between one hour before and one hour after services on Wednesday evening. Spahitas Mexican Restaurant will abide by state local laws for the sale of alcohol for consumption on premises. It will be posted on the front window that sales will not be made on specified church meeting times as noted. Any additional church meeting times will be discussed and honored. The church will be responsible for coordinating the Spahitas Mexican Restaurant's requested days and times within a reasonable time frame.
And signed with the great public.
Yeah, they had given us a document that had signatures by those parties.
Any questions?
Wasn't the public hearing current?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be.
That was I'll be, and I'd like to add to that with your permission, resuming Matt Parcel's ST06A-088 and ST06A-088A from R1 to R2.
Okay, do we have any questions on that?
Mr. Lewis is here. The council had discussed the condition with him last month, and the language that he and I discussed, I've given you all copies of, so if you all, after the public hearing, during the whole business, choose to adopt that amendment, if someone would agree that condition, and that is what's implied.
The representative from the Spahitas Mexican Restaurant just came in. We might invite her to, if she wants to say anything. Did she talk on her own?
Yes.
No problem. No, you did, okay.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Okay, we're going to move into our old business, second reading of NX rezoning of Matt Parcel XX126050 from Act to R1.
Okay, do we have any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the NX rezoning of Parcel XX126050 from Act to R1.
Okay, we got a motion, but, period, I'll second it. I still want to see.
I'll accuse myself for the voting.
Okay. I'll check.
Yes, the next one is rezoning of Matt Parcel ST06A-088 and ST06A-088A from R1 to R2.
Okay, do we have questions on?
That's, you know, if the...
They need an emotional approval, you can have that condition there.
I'll make a motion that we accept the rezoning.
Do we need to read the condition?
Yes.
Okay, it's approval means everyone agreeing to the condition that upon construction of new dwelling on the parcel designated ST06A-088A, which is commonly known as 576 H Street Stadium, for its sale, there shall be constructed a concrete driveway connecting the structure located on the lot to the existing concrete driveway, ST06A088, before the said dwelling may receive an occupancy permit. So, basically, it's just a driveway.
Mr. Lewis, you agree with that condition?
Yes.
I'll second.
You know, hey, made a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion, second, all in favor.
Next is the second reading amendment to the golf cart ordinance.
I make a motion to approve this here, ma'am.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, second. All in favor.
Next item is alcohol license request and application for distance waiver permit for restaurant Piquet MX.
I'll make a motion that we set the request and application.
With the condition that...
With the condition that has been read in public.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion, second, all in favor. Anybody sustain the motion?
Moving on to new business, we have the first reading of rezoning Matt Parcel ST02-070 from R4 to R1. This is what we went over at the work session. It's Mr. Billy Joe Jones trying to define his home property in more of a defined manner for his home state exemption, and that was in your packet left.
This is just a way of a first reading, you'll be at the public hearing on this.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a motion to waive first read.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, first read, second, all in favor.
Next item is alcohol license request for Sico Gas Station, Casa Business Incorporated.
Okay, we have any?
Yeah, yeah, everything's okay, all the alcohol.
I'll make a motion that we set the alcohol license request for Sico Gas.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor.
Next is the second reading amendment to open market ordinance.
I make a motion to approve the amendment to the open market order.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, all in favor.
Next item, I'll give you the vacation payout, water department and police department. We went over this at the work session, due to the shortage in the area of the water department and police department. The interim water director, Jordan McDaniel, and the chief of police, Alan Johnston, have not been able to take all of their vacation time. A copy of that was given to you all in the Thursday work session, and so this is a request for a vacation payout because of the short session.
I would like, can I make a point here? I remember this came up last year, and when this came up, we gave the chief a raise to compensate him for the overtime. Does anybody remember that? This isn't overtime, this is vacation. It's vacation.
Because they had, Jordan, they could have paid overtime, otherwise they lose it.
Okay, no problem.
All right, any more questions?
If not, I'll make a motion that we pay the chief in court for their vacation time.
Okay, we got a motion by Eddie.
I'll second.
Eddie's second, all in favor.
Next item is the insert valve. This was also discussed in the, by Mr. Powell at the work session. These insert valves will provide valves to turn off water if any needs make repairs and isolate areas as well.
Well, we discussed that, and how we're going to get more bids, correct?
Correct.
So, do we need to make a motion to proceed to get more bids, or just?
No, probably make a motion to approve it once we receive the bids, and we'll present that and create that.
I'll make a motion, we approve what we discussed at the meeting for the valves, and when we get the bids in, we'll make a decision who will get the bids.
Okay, we got a motion to go ahead with the valves.
We have a motion, you need a second.
Yeah.
And I'll second.
Okay, very second, all in favor.
Next item is trees. This is another area that Mr. Powell explained and gave a copy of the risk factors involved with some of the beginning of dead trees in a right away.
Do we have any questions about the tree situation?
I'd like to say something here. If we're, a lot of these trees that are coming out, did we put a plan together to replace these trees with a more desirable variety, let's say? We take water oak out, water oak's not the most desirable tree you want on Main Street. Let's replace it with dogwood, something that doesn't grow as high. Can we put a plan together to replace these trees along Broad Street?
I don't, I don't see why not, looking at it. There are no ones who are going to take that. So, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Again, I think in the meeting last Thursday night, we were discussing to look at, look at the situation a little harder and get more bids on it also, is that not correct?
We have three bids on that kind of trees. That's up to council, mayor and council, if you guys want to, we'll advertise it.
Because it's over ten thousand now.
Well, what the financial policy says is that purchases for individual goods services costing more than five thousand and less than twenty-five thousand are generally bid through an informal bid process. These purchases are handled by written quotes or bids, and invitation to bid is the solicitation of written offers and/or pricing based on specification of required equipment, material, and/or general service. These are neither publicly advertised in a newspaper nor openly publicized, but, I'm sorry, nor open publicly, but must be approved by mayor and city council.
Do we have a recommendation bid as far as you've gotten, three bids?
There's three bids, and there is, that was included in the packet on Thursday night as well. I love their...
I got the spreadsheet right here.
I have a spreadsheet, but the three bids, kind of, okay.
Here's the spreadsheet.
Kind of our limits and...
We got, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Have we ever used poor field before that we know of?
No, it's, are they, are they probably insured?
I mean, he's, I mean, he's a little bit experienced.
And where is he located roughly?
Andy, would you be able to answer that question?
Sam said we're gonna not use poor field.
Okay.
We've news cut above before in Willis Street. Poor field, I don't believe we've news them before.
I'm going to make a motion that we check their insurance and go with poor field as the worst there.
What other questions before we?
Don't have to fill out all the contractor affidavit and information.
But now, we're going right, right now, we're going right, or we, we do not do all the trees as all this, we do what's clear at this point now.
Right, this listing includes three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, tree P and tree thirteen, which is included on that spreadsheet.
So, if what says by...
Yeah.
At that point now, we could come back again.
You want to make sure they're properly insured and bonded, you know?
You might...
That's, that's one. Can we, can we actually ask that they, I mean, if they're a tree service, can we ask that they help us find some replacements? Include that into the, include that into the bid?
I think we ought to do that on individual, on different...
We will commit to do, you know, doing the trees, but I think we need to go ahead and have these ones taken out first. Yeah.
Because we got a table to actually put on.
Yeah, I'm trying to say.
Right, we can say, we'll talk about, I mean, if y'all want to get this done.
So, I just want to make sure that we don't put, you know, a little tiny little seemingly word, a nice mature tree, you know, that's coming out. These trees are beautiful in our city, and they define Broad Street, and I hate that they're coming out, but I understand, you know, there's, there's a risk, there's an insurance risk involved, so...
You don't hate it any worse than I do, because I've seen them all my life, and I, I still have questions, but I'm going to leave the office.
I know, so that's, that's my motion.
Okay.
I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor.
The final item I want to mention this night is for adult literacy barra sponsorship. A copy was put in all of your boxes, arguments, there are different levels of sponsorship. Two fifty, five hundred, seven fifty, one thousand, and fifteen hundred. two fifty, five hundred, seven fifty, one thousand, and fifteen hundred, in the past, the city stadium has done five hundred to silver sponsorship.
I make a motion that we go with the five hundred.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to go with the five hundred, um we have seconds by Eddie, all in favor?
You have your question?
I feel we need to watch my second.
We have a motion, where do you have?
Sir, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna say that the Rainwater Foundation gave away the clothes on Saturday, which was a good success, and I wanna thank the mayor and the council for providing ability for us to do so, and I wanna thank all of you for your donation that you made during the year to make this possible, and the people weren't happy with the closing that, and thank you.
Thank you, Eddie, that's great. I I know, I'm such such young a tree, I'm a bit, we we uh we've been taking them down just few at a time, and uh we might not, we look at one as the worst, and then kind of spread them out a little bit, and come back with what y'all wanna push down. A lot of people don't wanna treat, it's got, like I told you the other night, they get old, that's why people die, and so, that's what happens, so. Okay? We really have a motion on that. I made a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Eddie's second, all in favor? Thank you, I only have everybody to come.
Have y'all been, have y'all been straining? We could do, I mean, we could do the work session, or the council may have to go to the test, but to the work session where they go.
Let me double check on.
Let me know which one I'll have my. That's my understanding of it, y'all are, y'all are gonna get out. And so, and they got, the council got the opportunity to appoint maybe other things that they want to. One thing that you probably need to do, probably need to have, sure, we, so you all be prepared, you know, and we'll tell it. If it's a certain timeframe, we'll, we'll get it from that, we're gonna do that to care and try to further to do that, to do it. Hopefully, y'all, some of y'all, we've heard all the, all the, all the, all that applies to. Do you have a meeting, you need to advertise it, somebody who takes care of it, kind of, you know, you, y'all can go in to executive shut, and if you hear something, you don't have to be there, you all can have that, all the evidence still has to be taken. But then, if you all feel like you, and same time, if you all, you, and me, and I, you all, and some things, you guys, I think, you work against Madison County, he's done, you know, we, y'all remember, we see about the fair first base, you know, we had a hearing, and I helped, I helped the panel prevent first base, Mr. Pruitt, so, if y'all are, if you feel like, if you feel like, we'll do it. You know, y'all have a separate, y'all have a separate, I can't recall what you all have, all the, we swear y'all are, y'all have a copy of, you have a copy of it? When, when we swear y'all are, y'all have a copy of it, you have a copy of it?
Some nice person worked for us.
I mean, that's the same, I think, I think that's the primary thing, that there's a lot of other types. If they try to, if the council may, somebody, I mean, this is purely hypothetical, say, you're in court, you're in a business, and they try to get that business to be well in the city, it's a problem, too. I mean, you all participate in the city, it's much you all want, but doesn't having a bid somewhere, that's only a, and just like, I don't know if any of you here, when I did, you talked about. If y'all feel you're, are someone, don't talk about, you have to meet, y'all can be together, y'all can go to Christmas party or have you together, but don't, don't talk about, you have to meet. But if y'all think you need to talk about, whoever like care, y'all call a meeting, you have to do that. Hey, my, my. We have already, they need, you need to add that. So, you, you've already got those? We're gonna spread them, he's gotta check on his schedule, we're gonna spread them. They don't, they don't know when they're gonna be for the first time, they don't know, they don't really, they don't need to have everything.
Just let me know when you want me to.
There's a complaint.
Yeah, that.
Okay, alright, that's good, thank you. Can we get?
Yeah.
We're walking down the playground. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you kindly.
Feel free to use cell phone or the email address, it all comes with it, so. Thank you, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving.
I'm familiar, open records, not open records.
Who do you work for?
I'm with the county sheriff's office.
Oh, you, okay.
I also teach classes for Georgia military, and so I have student emails, they can't go on the government phone because this is subject to open record, well, those are protected by federal, so I maintain two cell phones.
So, you, are you, uh, what division are you in?
I'm just political science for the, for college.
No, I'm on my, I'm in for the sheriff's department.
I'm in Chicago sheriff's office.
Oh, are you, okay.
Equivalent of my camp.
You know, I do some work for Cody County, I've never done anything for the sheriff, but I I do some work for them on land use and zoning stuff, and things like that, so.
Constitutional officers completely separate.
Oh, yeah, 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 that, it's an interesting relationship between the board of commissioners and the sheriff because of the budget and the money situation and all that.
The personal dynamic changed a lot when Melvin Davis stepped down, retired, um, you know, the likes of power plays, John Daniels, just all about, the, John's just all about the. But you, even even at the worst, it's, we didn't have problems compared to.
What was the last manager's name, um? Retired last year.
Jeff Binko.
Binko, yeah, he he was telling me one time that, I mean, there's some personal issues over there, but he says, we keep them out of the press, and we we just have a deal that we're not, we're not gonna air all that in the public, it's not good for the public.
Um, one of the problems I had, had to go.
Yeah.
She's definitely fine.
Well, good.
And uh, and they, the public work director just resigned here last week.
Really?
Email.
Maybe, really?
He was four years old. He had my three months of service, and he, he stepped away, I think it was kind of a, a mutual, I think he was just as happy to go as.
Was there a conflict between him and Justin, or him and John, or do you know?
Projects had been finished.
I noticed when he gives his report, some of those commissioners were asking a lot of questions.
Well, Melvin wanted to fire him, and the commissioners wouldn't vote to do it just to spite Melvin. And this is my just third party neutral observation, so, yeah, we might agree, but we're not gonna do it. And so, he, Mel hung on and did whatever, and there was a big controversy over um the school out here on fifty three, we've got a creek, with the gas line that nobody knew about. But the problem with that is the school system sprung it on the county without talking to the county.
Yeah, the road situation out there and utilities, yeah.
Yeah, there was not even talking back and forth between the county government and the school system, and if the school system can dictate, that the county has to dictate, and that's one of them that's got.
Thank you for your agreement, sir, that's very helpful, thank you, thank you.